Departure has taken place. Seeing none, if you agree that the matters heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting were pursuant to the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, please signify by saying aye or yes. Tim Lovelace?
Yes.
Luann Wallace?
Yes.
Carl Ray?
Yes.
Steve Breeding?
Yes.
David Eaton?
Yes.
Rebecca Dye?
Yes.
Or is Christian?
Yes.
You now have approval to return to open session.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to ask everyone to please rise for the invocation and remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, Lord, we love you, we thank you, and we praise you today, Father. Father, forgive us for where we fail you each and every day, and thank you for allowing us to be a part of the local government, Father. Forgive us for where we fail you. Be with us, lead us, guide us, and direct us. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd just like to tell everyone that our county administrator, Mr. Lester, has had a family emergency, and so we are going to try to do the best we can do to conduct this meeting as expediently as possible. And so it's going to be most of us here tonight with the county attorney in aiding our plight that we're in. So excuse us if we're not doing things exactly like we're supposed to. We're failing a little bit today. And just keep our county administrator's family in your thoughts and prayers. So at this time, I'm going to ask for an approval of the agenda, and I do need to ask that some of these that we not kind of, we need to mark off, if you guys don't mind, that we can make things go a little faster tonight. So there's some things that we might can do away with. So, Mr. Breeding, do you have some thoughts on that, please?
Yeah, I think we can table these committee appointments.
Okay.
Everybody will serve any way.
That's right. Committees serve until they're reappointed or replaced. So number three is gone.
Constitutional officers, county attorneys.
I do have one matter to add under my report. It's a resolution for child abuse prevention month. If you don't mind to add that.
So you want to add that under number three, county attorney reports?
Yes.
I think you can just make announcements about the report of the minority, monthly reports in our package, household waste, you can just make announcements about that.
We're going to do number three in the request.
And EMS. I think that's about all.
Okay. So is that all that we need to do for the amending of the agenda?
Ma'am, I think so.
All right.
If I make a motion, we approve the agenda with those amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Breeding. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So at this time, we're going to have a public hearing on revenue share for solar energy projects and energy storage system ordinance. So if anybody came to sign up for that... Go ahead, Ethan. Okay, basically, for the public hearing, since Mr. Lester's not here to explain it to you guys, this was going to be for a solar, industrial solar in the county. And because we have no zoning, we needed to work on an ordinance that would take care of how this solar array, they call them, would actually be placed, and how it would act with stormwater, how it would act with the utilities, and the buffers that we have. It is in our packet, so if anybody, that has been publicized. So if anybody needs to read that, that is out there. Also, it talks about the battery storage. Last month, we gave a letter to, in support of American Electric Power. They are looking at iron battery storage, and if anybody else here can chime in if you want to do, help me on that. But they're looking at doing that on their footprint at the American Electric Power Station in Carbo. And so we added that into that solar ordinance, because it all has to do with storage, battery storage. And so that's basically what's going on with that. I think the amendments or the ordinance does talk about fees. I think the fees are like fourteen hundred dollars per...
Kilowatt.
Kilowatt.
Is it megawatt?
Is it megawatt?
Yeah, megawatt.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
So that's an annual fee. And it does exclude residential solar systems.
Yes, this is industrial. This is industrial at this time. Ms. Patton, you got anything else you need to add to that?
If I may, the ordinance that's been advertised, and it's for the board's consideration tonight, it's basically how the industrial solar facilities are going to be taxed. Currently, without the ordinance, the county's machine and tool tax would apply, but that would be, it's sort of a complicated way to do the solar facilities. And so this solar revenue ordinance creates a simpler way to provide that machine and tool tax on the solar facilities. But the ordinance only applies to really big projects. That's why there's a cutoff on what it will apply to, so it would not apply to any kind of facilities that anybody would have at their residence. But that's really essentially what the ordinance is. It's just controlled how the county's going to tax those facilities.
Very good. So we have no comments. We've done our comments up here. I'm going to officially, anybody want to say anything?
Is there any cause to the county on that? There's no cause to, can I?
No. All right. So all hearts are clear on the public hearing, and I will close the public hearing on the solar energy project at this time. Moving along to presentations, currently I have on my list of Mr. Dan Glass and Ronald Passmore, the Director of Regulation and Compliance Enforcement Division, Office of Emergency Medical Services, and the Dank Rescue Squad's request for an organizational variance. Gentlemen, if you can't get to the floor.
My name is Ron Passmore. I'm the Director of Regulation and Compliance Enforcement for the Virginia, also EMS, and the Department of Health. Dank Rescue Squad has petitioned or applied for an exemption to EMS regulations. Now, part of that process in the Virginia Administrative Code requires you as a body to give permission before I can, we can consider the request. So as part of that process, the code requires that I be present at the Board of Supervisory Meeting when Dank officially asks for your support, so that I can be a resource. I'm not here to be again for or against the regulation. I'm just here to answer any regulatory questions that you have. Bear in mind, if you give permission for this, then you are assuming responsibility for this as well, because you have to give permission first. And what they're asking you to do is to operate outside of compliance with EMS regulations and say that no other agency is able to. So I'm here if you have questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Glass?
One of our class is currently the regulation saying that any junior member at the sixteen year age, we have an opportunity with some youngsters in our area to restart our junior squad. We have at least four applications at this time, and they're very, very interested in doing it. But we would like to lower that age to fourteen. What we've got is questions probably on the safety involved. I assure you that they're safer with us than going to school with hundreds of people. Also, these kids participate in all sorts of sports activities. Ones that we got participate in tennis, they participate in band. So there's lots of opportunities, whether it's a wrestling, so how much closer can you get to people. But then, there is a good chance here for us to draw over it. Our squad is an aging group of people. I can admit that, that we are. But when you have people out there pushing to move some of the good laws, the eighteen year olds, they're also out there talking about allowing sixteen year olds to go. And all we're doing is asking help the community. If you have any questions, thank you.
Mr. Glass, is it age thirteen or fourteen?
We originally put thirteen, I think that would be fine.
So it's thirteen? Since these are, Mr. Glass, since these are minors, do you have a form for the parents to sign to allow them to do this? And they'll be a written document?
Yes, it'll be a written document. Some of the things that we are looking at, they will go through some training prior to begin their, beginning to help us. They will be required to wear masks, gloves, on all costs, and things like that.
So are all the departments in the county requesting the same thing?
There's just only a request from agents.
What, I guess this is a question for Katie, our attorney. What legal responsibilities would we have as a board for lowering it from sixteen to thirteen?
Well, this is not something that the county administrator had discussed with me, but in reading the resolution that's proposed that he drafted, basically, we're not, we don't have the authority, from my understanding, to grant this. The resolution would say that the Board of Supervisors strongly supports the Board of Directors' request for an organizational operational variance for the purpose of increasing volunteer members for the junior squad membership by lowering the age to, age requirements to thirteen years of age while creating opportunities for members to serve the Dank Community. So again, this was not discussed with me prior to this, but it appears that we really don't have, you know, any authority. It's just we're, we say that we agree and encourage that that be allowed, so.
I can give some guidance on that.
Will that resolution, will that meet your needs?
Not quite. I need to give you some guidance on drafting the resolution. I can give you the Virginia Administrative Code twelve VAC five. Twelve VAC five dash thirty-one dash one-ten, under exemptions for EMS agencies, and under B two.
Could you pull that microphone up a little bit, please?
Twelve VAC five.
Twelve VAC five dash thirty-one dash one-ten. And then B two. Actually, it's B one. It says the written request for exemption must be submitted for review and recommendation to the governing body of the jurisdiction or the chief administrative officer in which the principal office of the EMS agency is located before it's submitted to the Office of EMS. So if you guys were to say no to this, then the request stops at that point, because I can't consider requests that you want to support. So you are, this resolution, it requires, or as proof of support, you have to issue a resolution in support of the request. Then they begin the process with the Office of EMS.
So it's just either we object or support your request. And so I do think what I just read would do that, because it says that they do support your request for that. Is there additional language?
Yes. Now we need to talk about, the resolution needs to speak specifically to which regulations you're giving an exemption to. And there's multiple regulations in EMS regs that require minimum age of EMS providers, if you will. The first one being the one that is quoted nine hundred, which states the minimum age for an EMS provider in the Commonwealth of Virginia has to be sixteen years of age. So you'd be asking for an exemption to section nine hundred, and you'd be asking for an exemption to section twelve hundred as well, which specifically is titled, the regulation's minimum age of EMS vehicle personnel. It says EMS personnel serving in a required position shall be a minimum of eighteen years of age. An ambulance is required to have two trained providers on it. Both of those, of those two required positions have to be a minimum of eighteen years of age. Although we allow, we will certify EMTs beginning at sixteen, they can't function in that minimum too. They would be a third person on the truck until they get some experience. And then section B of twelve hundred says an EMS agency may allow assistance for observers in addition to the required personnel, period. An assistant or observer must be a minimum of sixteen years of age. And the concern that is stated, look at section nine hundred, that probably needs to be addressed in their plan, is under nine hundred, number one, be a minimum of sixteen years of age. Any EMS agency may have associated personnel who are less than sixteen years of age. This person is not allowed to participate in any EMS response or other activity that may involve exposure to a communicable disease, hazardous chemical, or other risk of serious injury. That's the part that needs to be made sure that the minor children are going to be covered outside of, especially when you're going outside of regulations by whomever is going to be insuring these children. Because they are going to be exposed to communicable diseases, hazardous material, all these. EMS scenes are inherently unsafe. They won't have the training necessary to make sure the scene is secure. So I think all those, I think for this to continue going through the process, all sections of regulations that deal with the age of these observers, the other sections are, the education component, Mr. Glass mentioned, they'll have some training. EMS doesn't allow training to anybody less than sixteen years of age. There's no way to document that. They may get some training at the agency, but that's not recognized training by the else of EMS, such as EMT or paramedic training. Because you have, the regulations also require you sixteen years of age to enroll in any EMS education.
Well, I'm not against any more volunteers, but I think we need to do our due diligence. And I think that, not having our county administrator here, I think there needs to be some communication with you and our attorney and Lonzo to get all this drafted out before we make, or before I make a determination or motion. This is very complicated, in a sense, to make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. And it's not that I'm against. I was a junior squad member at sixteen, and I didn't know apple from oranges. And I had to, it was probably, I was twenty-one before I could really catch the knack of anything going on, and I had to have supervision.
And the state does not hear, or again, it's where here, the state. As the regulations say, you can have junior squad members at eight years old, nine years old. They just can't respond to calls or receipts. So that's specifically what the ordinance needs to address, is what are these folks going to be doing that regulation doesn't allow them to do, and that's going to be seen responses.
And so, and from what I, the two, and I pulled up nine hundred, the general part, so they just need, the resolution needs to cite what you're asking, the waiver for, basically.
Nine hundred and twelve.
Those are the only two. Was this particular?
I think unless you're wanting to try to do education before sixteen, you'll have to add those as well. I didn't get any sensitive, but the rescue squad's requesting them to be able to do these. But I don't know that, that's going to probably go into the national level, because there's no way to become certified, because the state doesn't certify providers anymore. That's not at the national level, so. Just here, you have questions?
I think it would be a good, long process, the, like someone said, there's a lot of girls about.
We just have to make sure we keep them safe. That's why the regulation, the intention of the regulation of withholding them from doing seen response until sixteen is so that we're keeping young children safe.
One, my first question is why I just want, one, just rest them off. If someone can answer that question, I appreciate it.
So, board, Mr. Board members, let me ask this question. Mr. Passmore, you hang on right there. Thank you. So if we were to give a variance letter of support, that's not saying anything, because it has to come, your recommendations have to come back to us anyway.
Right.
Am I, I'm understanding that?
Well, at this point, is it a yes or no from Russell County? If it's a no from Russell County, the request dies. If it is a yes from Russell County, then the request will be put before the Training and Certification Committee on the Governor's EMS Advisory Board for consideration. They will, they will make a recommendation to Commissioner of Health as to whether they recommend approving this or not. Based on their approval, the Executive Director for the Office of EMS will make his determinations as to whether he recommends approval or not. Then it will work its way through the Deputy Commissioners all the way, only the Commissioner of Health will be able to give this, ultimately give this exemption. This wouldn't be a variance if we get exemption.
Thank you. So tonight, we could give them an exemption to move that to the next level.
You could give, you could, the resolution would have to be amended, because it's stated as a variance instead of an exemption, and it does not list the specific amounts, but it is just a letter of, it is, again, that's what I took from what I read. It's just, it's, the board is only voting whether they support it or don't support it. Something, I can amend, you can direct me to amend the, amend the resolution to include the appropriate legal language.
The resolution needs to be specific. What sections of regulation are you supporting an exemption to? A variance is only good for one year. It's a very temporary thing. An exemption, you're asking for exemption for the life of the regulation. So this would stand as long as chapter thirty-one remains, EMS regulations, which we are in the process of changing that. That will take a few more years. Once chapter thirty-one repealed, then this exemption will go away, and this whole process starts over.
So in our board book tonight, it says variance, and that's just for one?
That would give you a one-year, that would only give you a one-year exemption. And that's not typically what an agency, like, when they're asking for something like this, that's not, a variance is not typically.
Okay.
Usually a variance is, I'm at the end of my certification, and I forgot to get my continuing education hours done, and I have two more weeks. So it's a very effusive process.
Okay, thank you. So will, board, you got any decisions? Do you want to just let that ride, or you want to, that's going to come back up on number four?
I'm not comfortable voting on anything until I understand what's in section nine hundred and twelve. Can you tell me that, Kate?
Yeah, I can write that. These are administrative codes, and twelve five dash thirty-one dash nine hundred, it's titled general requirements. And what it's, and I guess the first section here, it says, it's, excuse me.
Would you use your microphone again?
Am I not allowed?
Could you turn it around?
Okay. It says EMS personnel shall meet and maintain compliance with the following general requirements. And one is be a minimum of sixteen years of age. An EMS agency may have associated personnel who are less than sixteen years of age. This person is not allowed to participate in any EMS response or other activity that may involve exposure to a communicable disease, hazardous chemical, or other risk of serious injury. So I guess that's what we are asking for, the exemption is to not be, would be twelve VAC five dash thirty-one dash nine hundred. Okay. And so that's the only exemption that would be.
And twelve hundred.
Okay. In that type of section, that's the only, okay. So that would be, that would be that one. And then twelve hundred is, it's titled minimum age of EMS vehicle personnel, and it's a short section as well. It says, A, EMS personnel serving in a required staffing position on an EMS vehicle shall be at least, shall be at a minimum of eighteen years of age. And then B, an EMS agency may allow assistants or observers in addition to the required personnel. An assistant or observer must be at a minimum of sixteen years of age. So I guess, I guess the question would be, is, you know, we're asking for this exemption, are they going to be an observer, are they going to be a staff? So that would be, so you would just need to do twelve hundred B then, if you're going to be specific. So those would be the two requests from the EMS to support the exemption of nine hundred one and twelve hundred B. Is that correct? I want to make sure I'm saying it right.
Thank you. So board, we're going to look at that under the request on number four, unless you want to take it up right now. I'll allow for that. Anybody?
Well, I'd like to be able to study it a little bit better and understand what I'm actually voting on. I mean, I know we've got a lot of it thrown at us. I can understand what the need is for the rescue squad. I'm sure we do have aging people, and we do need younger people to get involved, but I would like to have a little bit better understanding of what I'm doing here, and read some of the information here on these codes before I, before I make my decision. But I think it's nothing really that pending that you got to have them this month, right now, do you? Because it's something that we could do next month at our next meeting. That way they give us enough time to digest it. Thank you, sir.
Could, can you have that resolution modified?
Sure.
For next month?
Sure. All right. All right. So we have a consensus. They'll need a vote. I'm just going to move on. The next presentation is with the American Red Cross Appreciation, and Jess Powers. I left your name out, Barry. Do the last name for me. Thank you.
Barry A. My name is Barry Abramovich. No, I'm not from around here originally, but I'm here to stay now.
Give the microphone, please.
I'm sorry, I'm not from around here originally. With a name like Abramovich, it's a good old southern name, southern Lithuanian. With me, I have Sharon Dixon, who is the disaster program manager for Red Cross in our Bristol office. A few years ago, Mountain Empire Chapter, where birds were growing up. We do still have an office in Bristol, but it's no longer the Mountain Empire, unfortunately. And behind me, and gentlemen, we have some of the volunteer firefighters that have come here, I believe, to support Jess. Come on up, guys. First of all, I applaud the rescue squad, and I hope you're successful, because every volunteer agency is facing the same crisis, and if here it's going to be worse. Our average age of Red Cross, I'm seventy-one, and that's about the average age of Red Cross volunteers. So, as you know, Jess Powers is the county's emergency manager. But I know, as my dad responded, I live here in the county, and there's only two of us, me and Jess, that respond to Red Cross situations in the county. And as we, Sharon has to come sometimes from Bristol. We have other volunteers, but sometimes we're helping them. Ten, was it ten? Ten days ago, we had a huge fire here in town. The response was awesome. Those of you who are on the scene, I, we had every fire department, except one was held back. Every piece of equipment, responders, EMS squads, New Garden, Lebanon, Castlewood, transported seven people to the hospital. And I'm living right now, I hope I'm not taking too much time, but some of the residents had to, well, two toddlers had to be tossed out of a third floor window for someone to catch, and the parents had to jump. The parents were injured, and they were transferred to other houses. The parents were injured, and they, they were transferred to other hospitals outside of the region. I might be wrong on this, but there was no fire alarms heard in that building. I could be wrong, and I hope I'm wrong, but if, if I'm right, then I think the county needs to look at that in a multi-family building through fire smoke alarms. And I hope I'm wrong, so don't, don't put me on that, but I just learned about that tonight, and I had living room here, I might be in trouble, but we have free Red, Red Cross, we have free smoke alarms. As a matter of fact, Jess, when was the first one in Castlewood, a few years ago, I mean, more than a few years ago?
Probably been seven years ago.
Seven years ago. Oh, by the way, I had the good fortune of coming eleven years ago and meeting Jess and working with him. And you have a gen of an emergency manager here. And I, I know most of the emergency managers in Southwest Virginia, and I've been on, Wednesday, I'm leaving for Arkansas, my twenty-eighth deployment nationally, I've seen what happens when they don't have a good plan in place. Jess is, I have to tell you this one story. Jess, it's three-thirty on a Sunday morning, my phone's ringing, "Jess." And I know, it's not good news. He said, "Barry, I'm out of town." I said, "Yep." He said, "We have a cave rescue situation." I said, "Yes, that's not even on my list of things that could ever come up." I mean, and there was, outside of Cleveland, four people stuck in a cave. It was three-thirty in the morning. He says, "Barry, I need you to go to Walmart," and he had a lot of these lists of about twelve lines that I never bought before, but I bought them that day, and if it was anyone else, anyone else, I would have not bought, I would have bought half of them. And he also said, "Barry, this is going to take all day." I didn't know where he was, he was at a training class somewhere. It was three-thirty in the morning, he had a whole list, all right? He said, "The rescuers will be coming from all over the region because the cavers rescued themselves." And they did, North Carolina, South Carolina, West Virginia, Maryland District, Virginia, of course, Tennessee. There were about thirty-five of them showed up. I didn't know Blacksburg had a cave rescue team, they arrived with a trailer with equipment. And they were surprised that we had breakfast for them, we had, we had gatorade, we had water, we had coffee, we had lunch for them. The rescuers said, "We've never gotten this before." I said, "You've never had Jess Powers as emergency manager?" Because he has to request it. But I guarantee those thirty-five cavers from all over the region went back and said how well they were treated, we even served them pizza before they left. I'm, I'm talking too much, somebody wrote, "I'm talking too much," please. But the coup de grace was at ten-thirty on a Sunday morning, a truck with two porta potties arrived. I don't even know, we get porta potties during the week, but they arrived. CNN arrived and started with their big satellite truck. And at four-thirty that afternoon, the last stranded person was removed from the cave. We served the rescuer pizza, they thanked us, oh, and every item that he gave me on the list, eventually, they came up, the rescues came up at, at one point or another, and asked, "Hey, can you get me whatever?" I said, "Come on, back to the truck here." "You have it there already?" I said, "Yes." Because Jess Powers, our emergency manager, told me to get it. Anyhow, that's just one of many stories. Like I said, it's a pleasure working with Jess, but the reason we're here tonight, Friday night, what number was that response? Disaster Action Team Response. Usually it's a fire, but we've done the cave rescue, we don't tree, we do floods. I have a Friday, the partner fire, what number was that for you?
Five hundred and forty-nine.
It's, it's five hundred and forty-ninth response, and we were honoring five hundred, because I already owe almost a six hundred. Most of them after midnight, unfortunately, not all of them, you know, most of them after midnight, we talked more in three-thirty in the morning with most of these gentlemen, too. And I come to love my volunteer, I call them my volunteer firefighters. They're not, I did it in Northern Virginia, I did it in Atlanta, I've seen paid firemen, I put these guys up against any of those with the same equipment. They, they do it because they do it with a passion, it's their neighbors, it's their home, it's their friends, and I love them. But Friday, Friday night, Saturday morning, after being on the scene for five hours, the Lebanon crew was the last crew to leave, they rolled up their hoses, they drove, you know where they drove? They, they went past the firehouse, you know where they went? They went to Bristol County Medical Center to see how the people were that were transported. Jess has took them in my heart to a higher level. Anyhow, sorry, Jess, but.
You worked for them, didn't you?
Great.
Barry.
Go ahead.
If it wasn't for the sake of rural people, we would not have those responses. So if they wouldn't call us out, their staffing, the dispatch office, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, holidays, vacations, they're always there.
I apologize, I didn't realize, I didn't know I stayed at dinner. I said the dispatch people had it under control. As a matter of fact, seven or eight fire departments were on the scene, but the eight ones held back because that was the only one left in the county to do something in the county. And one last love. We had mutual aid from the American Volunteer Fire Department. And because there was no aerial equipment in Russell County, and they provided their tower truck. And they came with the full response, they had no problem coming, except it took them forty minutes to get here. Your fire, fire department time, that's the most, you know, that's almost, I don't even talk about it. We're talking about three, ten minute time. Just something in the back of your head, I know, I know, it's an expensive piece of equipment, and we don't have that many tall buildings, but we needed, we needed it that night. Have I gotten myself in trouble yet? I wanted to thank the dispatchers, you have our respect, and you're the first ones that get the call. And when Jess, you called Jess and he calls me, I know it's because it's needed, and that, that's appreciated. Now, for the resolution we're here, responding to over five hundred DAT calls, Disaster Action Team Responses, house fires, floods. Wow, he does other things, too, but some of the stuff Red Cross doesn't respond to. And it's just a key certificate of appreciation, but, but as a volunteer, I know, we don't do it for the rewards, but it sure is nice to be recognized. Presenting to Jess? Jess Powers for five hundred Disaster Action Team Responses for the American Red Cross on behalf of the National Office, the Virginia Regional Office, and especially the Red Cross of Southwestern Virginia and the Bristol Office, Sharon, myself, and our other volunteers. Thank you, Jess, it is my honor.
As the Emergency Management Coordinator for Russell County, you know, it's my honor and privilege to coordinate these volunteer services that bring, if you look at five hundred and forty-nine fires in Russell County, how much money do you think that would bring into the county? Over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for emergency assistance to our residents. About fifteen thousand dollars a year. So it's critical for our families to receive this assistance because ninety-five percent of the families do not have homeowners insurance. And they have, they don't have family members to go to. Eleven residents at the apartment have nowhere to go. With coordinating the American Red Cross Disaster Relief, they had somewhere to go. And we're placing the last family into apartment this week. And so, you know, without my volunteer, my fire department members, our EMS agencies, our dispatchers, you know, they do an amazing job, especially here in Russell County. And I would like to thank them because I'm standing on some big shoulders. And all I'm doing is just requesting services and coordinating services, so thank you.
Thank you, Keith. By the way, we'd like to give a picture. We need to get a picture, and we've got Sefulana right through here. Come on, everybody, we're going to get a picture of you, you look beautiful.
And everyone is welcome to join us any night at three-thirty in the morning, we'd be happy to have you, watch what we do, and perhaps join us.
Photo ops, line up, come on, don't be bashful.
I never know. I've always liked.
You're going to take a photo for us?
Yes, sir, thank you.
If you're a water.
Oh, I haven't seen him.
No, you're too far out, Sonny, you're too far out. You're too far out, Sonny, come on, get up here.
Yeah, you have to bounce it up.
Maxie, you're not coming?
Come on, son.
I'm going.
Down in front.
Oh, yeah. Maxie.
Where's Dan?
You're short on me and Brian.
Am I down four or nothing?
Oh, yeah, I got it, I got it.
And Maxie was there with the son of the cave rescue, weren't you, Maxie? I, I will. Smile, cheese, chocolate.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much, all of you.
What's my phone number?
Harper's, shut it down, April sixteen, I don't know.
It's my phone.
Jess was killed the other day.
Not while I'm thought about. Because it's in her mouth.
And daily, they're all standing up.
That part's my own property, but the big cavern is on my property.
Okay, that's good.
I'm not on horse. Because I'm not good at taking.
I take pictures for them all the time, and I've never sent them to anybody.
Hey, make a copy of that.
Okay, moving along to our next. Here's our recognition of National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, which is our E nine-one dispatcher, nine-one-one dispatcher, so guess what? Come on up, you're the next contestant. The process is right.
Like all, like all of us speak, I don't know which one of them.
We're listening to them every day.
Deputy.
If you listen to them every day, they speak every day.
Thank you.
This is actually just half of us, another half is working. Somebody's got to do it.
The other half is working for us, thank you very much, smile, guys. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Madam Chair, do you need a motion to make that, to declare that?
Let's take one, I'll take a motion to declare.
Okay, I'll make a motion to declare April the ninth through the fifteenth, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, E nine-one dispatchers.
I'll second that.
Thank you, have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you again.
Here's something I think was very fascinating, seventy-five thousand, one hundred and thirty pounds for these folks. That's real fast.
All right, let's move along to the new business. I need approval of these minutes considered from our last meeting, the unapproved minutes of March sixth, March twentieth, and March twenty-eighth.
So move on now.
So this was absent, so.
I'll make a motion on the first one.
On March the sixth, I have a motion, and we have a second, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? That motion carries. On March the twentieth, twenty twenty-three, I need a motion.
So move.
I have a motion, I need a second. I have a second, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, March twenty-eighth, I need an approval on that, a motion.
Which one was only Virginia state?
All right, on March twenty-eighth, I need a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion for.
I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Any extensions? One, two, three. I got three extensions, all right. Thank you, motion carries. Next, I need an approval for expenditures presented in your packet for payment.
So move, ma'am, just second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. We're skipping number three, we're down to citizen comment period. And I do have on my list is Linda Couch, Cleveland, Virginia. Come on up, Linda, thank you for being here with us.
Thank you all for having me. I'm here, I had brought a letter off from our Russell County Fish and Day a couple of weeks ago, and I wanted to see if y'all would want to be able to donate a bit to us.
Dear in comment period, we usually don't speak, but I will, if you're on our list, so hang on. Thank you for coming, we appreciate you.
I appreciate it.
Anybody else have any comments tonight that didn't sign up? All right, I'll close public comments. Next, we're moving along to the Constitutional Officers Reports and Requests. I see no one here for that. County Attorney, Ms. Katie.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and the first item that I have is the ordinance for the revenue share for solar energy projects and energy storage systems. As I discussed a little bit earlier, this is basically just a tax ordinance. Because we do not have zoning, we cannot regulate through an ordinance any kind of placements or, or, or requirements of a solar, of an industrial solar project, but the code does allow, requires certain projects to get approval by the host county, and that's where it's called a solar facility siting agreement. And so that's not anything, I did provide that template for the board, but that's nothing that you need to approve. That's only when, that's only when a project comes that something in a similar form will come before you to be approved at that time through a public hearing. The only thing for approval tonight is just this ordinance, and it's, it's just very straightforward. Like Madam Chair said, it, it, it basically takes it to assess a revenue share of fourteen hundred dollars per megawatt, and that's how it's taxed, instead of using our formula that we use for machine and tool tax. And that will be for both solar projects and energy storage systems that, and specific exemptions are anything that's five megawatts or less. And again, that doesn't mean a whole lot to me, but in the committee meeting, it was described, that's a fairly substantial project to get to that level, so. If the board has any questions, I'll, I'll be happy to answer it, but the ordinance is available for the board to consider adopting.
I'll make a motion, we approve that ordinance. I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the revenue share for solar energy projects and energy storage systems ordinance, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Any extensions? And I will say that the Technical Advisory Committee that we put together, I thought was exceptional. I want to thank Mr. Lovelace and Mr. Reading for serving on that, along with many energy partners and Ms. Patton. That would include Dominion, who played a huge part in this, and I'm thankful to them for being a part of that. Appalachian Voices, the Nature Conservancy, and I'm missing a whole big bunch of partners on that, but they did an outstanding job of bringing together these ideas to help us put this together. So I'm very pleased with that, thank you very much. Okay, Katie, you've got something else?
And the last thing I have for the board is, and I'm, I'm sorry, I got it to you so late, I realized it was going to be April. This is, this is a matter that's really close to me, and as, as, as you all know, I serve as legal counsel for the Department of Social Services here. And so I work with those individuals who are doing their best to, to prevent child.
I thought it said six P M., but I apparently did.
Six o'clock, public hearing, four eleven, twenty-twenty-three. All right, moving along, we're back to the number four, which is the, oh, and by the way, on the, the public hearing for county tax rate, Mr. Lester wanted us to make sure, and he told us this before he left, that we've given our employees a seven, that included in this is a seven percent raise for our employees, and the employee pay raise over, with two bonuses, over the past, how long?
Eight years.
Eight years? Thirty percent raise with two bonuses. So we're, we're really proud of that fact for us, thank you very much. And Mr. Eaton says, "And no taxes." All right, number four, the EMS Resolution for the DACT Rescue Squad Operational Variance Request. We know that that is now an exemption, and we are working on that, so we don't, do we just need an emotion to move that forward to hear it next month?
Table it till next.
Table it till next month, thank you, Mr. Reading. Moving on to number five, is the County Kids Fishing Day, and we've had a public comment concerning the Cleveland, and the, oh, it's the Russell County, and, which is Cleveland, and the Homeacre Kids Fishing Day, and I'll entertain a motion to give them a donation.
I'd like to make a motion that we give the Russell County Kids Fishing Day five-hundred, and the Homeacre Kids Fishing Day five-hundred.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, ladies. And next thing, we have the Leachate Containment Concrete Foundation Contract. This is gonna go at our county landfill. This is to keep up with our permits, I'm assuming, for Department of Environmental Quality, also fondly known as DEQ, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the payment, or the fifteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
So move on, Chair.
I have a motion, I've got a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. This time, I'm gonna go through quickly the board discussion and reminders. I'll start with Mr. Lovelace.
I have none, Madam Chair.
Mr. Eaton.
No, ma'am.
Mr. Reading.
No, ma'am.
Ms. Dar. Mr. Christian.
I'll pass him.
Very good, and I will remind, I'm gonna take prerogative here, I will remind everyone that this is our blessed holy week, and we're coming up on the Easter holiday, and I want to wish everyone a wonderful holiday, and remember what the reason for the season is. But also, another thing that we did in this past year was we, we made a resolution for Forty-Nine Winchester to be the date, four-nine in Russell County. Remember that, guys? We did this back in August, so it just so happens it's falling on Easter Sunday, but that is our Forty-Nine Winchester Day, and we, we want to celebrate them, too, as, as well as our risen Savior. So anyway, at this time, with all hearts clear, I will declare this meeting adjourned.
Are you gonna have a continued meeting?
Well, I don't know, I guess we are. Thank you very much, Ms. Attorney. I'm not adjourning. I'm, I'm adjourning to reconvene on April eleventh, public hearing. At six. Thank you very much.